I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, April 2nd, 2018. It's 7:30. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. I ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To this flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll.
Toledo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Leeder.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
Brand.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. We have a quorum on to Agenda Item 3 at this time. Is there anybody who has any written communication they wish to submit to council? So if you have any written communication, please raise your hand. Anybody with written communication. Seeing none, we'll move on to public forum. This is an opportunity, Agenda Item 5, uh, 4, sorry, public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council, more specifically the chairman, on any item they so choose. Once you have been identified, we ask that you make your way over to the microphone to my right, your left. We ask out of respect for work that we have to get done here this evening and out of respect for other folks who may want to speak, that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you go over three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up your comments. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anybody who has signed in for public forum?
Yes, Mayor, I'll start with Gail Ronan.
Please identify yourself when you get to the microphone. And address is optional. I forgot to add that.
Yes, good evening. My name is Gail Ronno. I live at 345 Webster in Elmhurst, and thank you very much. Just have a few remarks to share with you folks. Again, my name is Gail Ronno. I'm an Elmhurst resident, and I am here on behalf of Elmhurst Cool Cities Coalition. We are pleased to learn that the city of Elmhurst is once again looking at a municipal electricity aggregation project. The city's newly adopted Sustainability Plan encourages researching how aggregation contracts can assist in meeting energy needs and encourage the purchase of cleaner renewable electricity. To quote the Energy Goal Number 2, Strategy 1 of the plan, "When cost savings can be realized, use municipal aggregation or other available programs to purchase cleaner and more renewable electricity, keep abreast of the methods and the times, and use best practices." We look forward to future discussions on electricity aggregation and again encourage the city to consult to include other groups in these programs. Again, thank you and have a great evening.
Rex Erby.
Rex Erby, 853 Hillside, resident. Again, I'm following on behind Gail here with regard to the municipal electrical aggregation program. We do appreciate being able to make a public comment, or we are welcomed, glad to come to the Subcommittee, the FAA-CS Subcommittee, to assist in whatever we can with those comments at the beginning of those meetings. The municipal aggregation program, as you guys know, was a success when we first started. 4.5 million. Everybody's pretty happy. Can't beat that. And then years two and three, obviously, it didn't work out too well. Not the fault of the city, that's just the way electricity pricing works. The catch that we have to deal with now is we have an opt-in versus opt-out. So a lot of the customers out there are a little bit leery of renewable energy or the aggregation programs. So if you have to opt-out, that means you are already automatically opted in. And if you get caught in a three-year program, and years two and three go bad, and we repeat history as, you know, I don't need to quote history lessons, those people of 16,000 that minus whoever did opt-out will be still opted in. What that means is they will get a surprise electric bill that might be 15, 20, we don't know what percent, but it could be X percent, and it could be a shocker. Pardon the pun. So I think that's a critical factor that as we look at this, that we decide how that's going to affect when we look at these programs and who comes back, so. There's anything else here? Let's see. Oh, in the plan, the current proposal that you guys have in your consent agenda mentions a 7% to 10% increase. That is due to, and it doesn't describe it clearly, it's the renewable energy adjustment that's on the bill that'll go to 1.89 cents a kilowatt. So a standard kilowatt's about 14 cents. This represents, I think, close to that 7%, 10%. So a lot of people don't even know this is coming up. And so by going to these programs for one year, you opt-out about half of that value, but then you get years two and three, you're going to get back into the full rate whether you're in that plan or not, the renewable energy aggregation program. So there's a few things that we have to get over. So again, be glad to help. Our team is here to help you navigate these waters. Thank you.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. Kind of a bad quarter for the residents of Elmhurst this year. Lucky Motors come along and told the city what they would pay. That means that clawback that's in that contract that you so readily said is effective, you might as well rip up all those contracts because they're not effective. City folded like a house of cards and just took what they were offered. Not a good deal. Not a good deal. For the residents, for Lucky Motors, he walked away smiling. And then we have that fees that the city has to charge for operating refuge pickup. We did get a 35 gallon, didn't we? What's the use of it? Very expensive, the administration, and why would have to call the city to tell somebody that they didn't pick up the refuge? I have no idea. And all the other malarkey with it about sweeping streets and all that, that's part of it. Mighty expensive for all three, isn't it? Really is. Yes, it's been a kind of a bad year. Refugees didn't work out too well. That's in the first quarter. Yes, indeed. And then our water bill, that couldn't be left alone either. Yeah, gotta raise that. Special assessments gotta go up. Rubbish treatment's gotta go up. Everything in this town gets more and more expensive. Really does. For the residents. And then we got the TIF. 35 years of TIF, accomplish nothing. But just think, commercial properties couldn't live, they didn't have the TIF. They went into a bank, they wouldn't even know how to find a loan officer. They just come to the city. How about 500,000? How about 50,000? You give it up. May not get it back, but you give it up. Simple as that. Oh yeah, and I like that line of credit. Very nice deal. I like paying the interest. Very nice. Yes, so the first quarter hasn't really been too good for the residents. Oh yeah, by the way, if you leave tonight, drive by the Jewels. There's a plastic building on their property.
Mr. Pagash, could you wrap up your comments, please?
There must be some little alteration in the zoning that allows a commercial property to have a plastic building? Would you do it as a resident? They still haven't got it up.
Michael Crumrie, 570 West Crackett.
Well, for all you hockey fans, I actually have some good news. The Blackhawks are in the playoffs. Yes, seriously, the Chicago Blackhawks are in the playoffs. And even better yet, it's free admission for all of the Blackhawk games. The Chicago Blackhawks' special hockey team will be in the 2018 USA Disabled Hockey Festival being held in the Chicago area, April 5th through April 14th. This event will bring in over 1,500 disabled hockey players from the United States, Canada, and even Great Britain, along with their coaches and families. The five areas of competition include blind, visually impaired, deaf, hard of hearing, special hockey, warrior standing amputee hockey, and sled hockey. To learn more, please go to usahockey.com, and that's usahockey.com. Just scroll down the page and you'll see photos and info about the Disabled Hockey Festival. There'll be over 20 games per day on Friday and Saturday this coming weekend at the Leaf Center in West Dundee and Fox Valley Ice Arena in Geneva. Specifically, the Chicago Blackhawks' special hockey team that my son is a player of. Members range from age 5 to 55, include both male and female athletes. The team is comprised of players that have autism, Down Syndrome, or other intellectual disabilities. The team promotes sportsmanship, team spirit, and increased confidence, all while playing hockey. Again, usahockey.com, scroll down, look for the Disabled Hockey Festival information. Anybody has any questions? Most of you guys know how to get ahold of me. Got to step away. Have a ill wife at home, need to get her some chicken soup. Thank you. Happy Easter.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ben Silver, and I am a community lawyer with the Citizen Advocacy Center at 182 North York. Two weeks ago, I spoke for the residents of Fremont Avenue and citizens of Elmhurst, asking the city council to follow the standards for conditional use codified in the Elmhurst Municipal Code. The city council chose not to do so. Over a dozen Fremont residents, some with decades on the block and others new to the neighborhood, spoke about the negative impact of the proposed structure on the character of the neighborhood, home values, and conformity with the comprehensive plan. Those are the standards by which this very proposal failed at the Zoning and Planning Commission. Members of this council said it was a tough decision. They cited the fact that the latest proposal had turned the building 90 degrees, even though it did not decrease the footprint, and had removed a parking lot that was never basis for the Zoning and Planning Commission or the Development Planning and Zoning Committee's denials of the application. What the members of this council did not cite was any reason or any evidence that the commission's decision was wrong. They overturned the commission without citing a single contrary fact. The ordinance in today's board packet is reflective of this inadequacy. It claims that, quote, "The applicant provided sufficient evidence that the proposal would not substantially diminish property values in the neighborhood." In fact, the applicant's expert testified, offered, provided no testimony to support that statement. There is no evidence in the record to support the council's determination on that subject. The ordinance discredits expert testimony that the proposal would, in fact, diminish property values without providing any reason. It continues with a confusing statement that someone or something, quote, "recommended two conditions." The ordinance does not tell us who recommended those conditions or how they are related to property value. The ordinance makes no reference to a court case that the DPZ Committee discussed substantially, nor did anyone on this dais rebut the arguments made last week, the case does not apply. That's not surprising, since that case does not apply to the current situation. But what then was the basis for overturning the commission? The DPZ Committee and this council have not seen any new evidence. What they have seen is a legal threat from the applicant. If conditional use decisions are administrative in nature, then the city has trampled the due process rights of the residents of East Fremont. However, several people on this dais claim that conditional use decisions in the city of Elmhurst are legislative in nature. Then it's hard to understand how this council, acting as a legislative body, could approve this application over the evidence presented by the Fremont residents. If this is a legislative decision, it is a choice by each and every alderman voting for it that the expectations, investments, and heartfelt concerns of the residents of Fremont Avenue are not as important as avoiding a potential lawsuit. This decision will lead residents across Elmhurst not to trust the city to follow its own code. Thank you.
That's all who've signed up for public forum, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's it for those who signed up for public forum at this time. Is there anybody who did not have an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet at the beginning of the meeting but wishes to address the council at this time? If so, please raise your hand so I can get a count. I see one, two. This lady seems eager to start. So we're gonna, please state your name for the record, and same guidelines apply.
Okay, great. Hello, my name's Eileen Ozer. I live on Fremont, and I just wanted to make a few comments tonight, of course, about the case, Elmhurst Extended Care Center. And I wanted to read an email to you. I think many of you have actually seen this email, but I thought I'd review it. This was sent by Christina Morrison to Thanh Warner, and it included a CC to the city attorneys in eight, was sent in October of 2016, when the original commission was, meeting was canceled by the applicant. At that day, Christina Morrison sent an email and said, "First, we'd like to confirm that an application who requests a code-compliant subdivision must and will be approved. We'd also like to discuss some federal legal issues we believe are in play. We'd like to confirm that we are on the same page with you as to which laws apply." A meeting was requested and was held at the end of October. What this looks like, in light of everything that's happened now, is that meeting happened, and there were decisions that were made. The case was pulled when it was supposed to go to city council in May of 2017 with the recommendation to actually deny the application. Suddenly, in the summer of 2017, you all changed your mind, and you thought, oh no, this doesn't affect. The fact is that in April of 2017, Mr. Levin, you requested the applicant to produce some plans that showed an east-west orientation of the building instead of a north-south. If you look on board docs, one of the actual drawings is exactly pretty much the same footprint as the one that you've approved. So I just don't understand how it can be said that this process was transparent when obviously a decision was made in, looks like in the summer of 2017. You wasted a lot of our time, we wasted money. If this was going to happen, then there's, I think there should be a better way for these developments to move forward, instead of making the residents think this is really an open process, and that they have some ability to contribute when developers are coming into this town. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McNichols, I think, was the other person.
I'm John McNichols. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to speak, of course, about the Elmhurst Extended Care Application for Conditional Use and the ordinance tonight. From the beginning of this case, being new to Elmhurst, I tried to seek some advice from some of the members of the council, and with my neighbors, we learned really that this was going to come down to standards and evidence. That's what we were told. Standards and evidence. And Elmhurst has some very, very specific standards for approving conditional use. Two of those, I think, are particularly important to discuss tonight. One of them is injurious use and property value. The ordinance is going to say, if you approve it tonight, that the applicant provided evidence that property values would not decrease if this plan were approved. I'm guessing it would surprise a lot of you to know that only one appraiser actually testified in any of the commission or committee hearings. And that appraiser was Mark Stapleton, and he actually, based on his license, based on his 30 years of experience appraising property, and based on his examination, he estimated and provided that estimate in a report to the commission in December of 2016, that my property value and all the adjacent property values would decrease by 4%. 4% is pretty substantial. If I, to ask any of you to lose 4% of any investment you had, I think you would agree that that's pretty substantial. He further estimated that property values in the neighborhood, you know, down the street, would also decrease by about 1%. Elmhurst Extended Care Center and their legal team never brought an appraiser, never testified, never rose their hand, swore, they were told the truth, the whole truth, never made their credentials available for examination, never made themselves available to be cross-examined. So no testimony. Only written testimony was provided. And as Mr. Silver already mentioned, it didn't refute property value decrease. Okay? That appraiser, Mr. Stapleton, was, well, never mind. I'll skip that part. So the comprehensive plan, just to sum up, there was no evidence from the applicant in writing, or I'm sorry, in open testimony. The city's attorney, Nick Pepper, actually, in an email between he and Thanh Warner, wrote that if expert testimony was submitted in writing, but the expert didn't actually appear, that there would be no probative value. No weight should be given to such evidence. So Mr. Stapleton is on the record. You have his license, you have his written testimony, you have his appearance before the commission. You have none of that from the applicant. So that standard was very subjective in the way that the council determined and the committee determined to say that property values wouldn't decrease in the neighborhood. They absolutely will, and I think everybody here knows it. The comprehensive plan of the city of Elmhurst is another very important standard. Members of the committee, on written deliberations, on transcripts, are on record saying, it's just a plan, we don't have to follow it, or we don't have to follow to the letter of the law. The truth is, it's a very important standard. And if you were to move to Elmhurst, to buy a house, build a house, you know, start a business, you would want to know that that plan actually meant something. It should. It's in Elmhurst law, it's in the municipal code. But the commissioners, I'm sorry, the committee members, they said it didn't matter. All of you, they voted for this conditional use, you chose to ignore that standard. The comprehensive plan of the city of Elmhurst puts the properties on Fremont Avenue, future use, not zoning, future land use, as a single-family residential. That is not what this ordinance will do. It will harm Elmhurst.
Mr. McNichols, could you wrap up your comments, please?
In summary, the plan, the application, the application has been the same since the beginning. Some of the plan changed, but it was after the committee rejected the plan the first time that this became a threat of a lawsuit. Since then, this commission, I'm sorry, the commission, the committee, and this council has been afraid to uphold the laws of the city of Elmhurst. This is bad for Elmhurst, this is bad precedent, and it has absolutely done nothing to restore the faith of any of the residents of Elmhurst that you will stick up for the residents.
Anyone else who did not have an opportunity to speak that wishes to do so at this time? Okay, we'll take this lady in the front.
Hi, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm new to the city. I live in 114 South Oakland, very close by two rail tracks, very close to each other.
Sorry, ma'am, we didn't get your name at the beginning?
Ruth Eba.
Ruth Eba.
That's my first name. R-U-T-A-H hyphen E-V-A. Last name Kono, K-O-N-C-I-N-C-O.
Please proceed.
114 South Oakland, and I'm originally from Germany, and we have tunnels for the trains. And it's just for me, many times, especially when I'm in a hurry, to having to cross over two rail tracks, and I was wondering if you, I mean, Elmhurst is a rich city, and I'm sure that we can afford to build more tunnels and bridges for the trains to pass, so people can not be held off. And I mean, it's very old-fashioned and outdated, you know, when you look at even third-world countries nowadays, I mean, you know, you just want to make people not wait, because America, people have to work very hard, and for the trains to think that their business is more important than anybody else's, it's kind of, you know, I'm always outraged having to look at these trains that, I don't know how long they can be sometimes, especially when they are, you know, with the slow speed traveling, and you have to look at all this graffiti. It's not very, it's not a very pleasant experience. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you for listening. God bless you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, that concludes public forum. Agenda Item 5, announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Parliament Bram?
Thank you, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to announce that this upcoming Thursday, April 5th, at 7:00 PM, in the Elmhurst Public Library, it's not sponsored by the Elmhurst Public Library, but being held in the Elmhurst Public Library, anybody who has concerns in regards to O'Hare impacts in the surrounding area, especially here in Elmhurst, FEAR, which is a nonprofit organization, will be meeting and presenting that evening. And just for those of you who don't know, FEAR is a nonprofit organization, standing for fair allocation in runways, obviously, at O'Hare Airport. And some of the topics that they will be covering is obviously noise pollution, but also the toxic chemical pollution from the airplane traffic, and what is foreseen to be the increase in such due to the proposed expansion at O'Hare. Thank you.
Okay. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda any alderman wishes to have removed to vote no or provide additional comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Mulliner. Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leeder.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Brand.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda in its entirety is approved. Agenda Item 7, reports and recommendations. Mayor Morley, that's me. I'll make this quick. I'm happy to say, as a continued update on the city's intent to rebuild our metro station, or our train station, more correct. The Illinois Commerce Commission has a fund, has a program called the Grade Crossing Protection Fund. Basically, if I'm reading from the website, rail crossing safety is a top priority of the Illinois Commerce Commission to prevent the loss of life due to train-related collisions. The Crossing Safety Improvement Program enables the ICC to identify and help funding for much-needed rail crossing safety projects on local roads and streets in communities throughout Illinois. That's attributed to Brian Sheehan, he's the chairman of ICC. Why do I bring that up? Because recently, the ICC approved, I think it's a two-year budget, and in it was an additional $2 million for our rebuild of our train station. So for those of you keeping track, when we did some initial planning and our project estimate came in at $18 million, we got a $10 million grant from CMAC, which is Federal Program Congestion Mitigation Air Quality. That is administered by CMAP, Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. Then we got an STP grant, Surface Transportation Program, that's a federal program, that's administered by DMMC, DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference. And this most recent, we've got $2 million from ICC, 2.4 from DMMC. So add it all up, and we have a total of $14,400,000 in grants allocated to our project. And I think that says a lot about staff and the hard work they're doing. You know, we pay a lot of taxes, and sometimes you have to go get some of the taxes you paid in. And we're getting these monies through federal programs, and I know staff is working on additional sources, so stay tuned. But wanted to let everyone know that our funding is up to 14.4 million. Staff is putting together RFQ right now for engineering and design, that'll probably go out in the next month. That'll probably go out in the next month. So, we're gonna start seeing some stuff. And we're definitely gonna have some public meetings. We had public meetings about a year ago when we did the initial planning, just to get an idea of what we were trying to do. But we're gonna get, dig down much deeper in the design aspect and certainly the residents of Elmhurst will be able to participate in that. And how fortuitous, the last person who spoke, we're actually adding another pedestrian walkway. So, there'll be two in addition to our underpass. And that's it for me. City manager.
Thank you. Three items. First is a community reminder that, starting April 7th, we will have the spring cleanups. These are on Saturdays. Information is on the website, but let me state that if your normal collection date is on Wednesday, your cleanup will be April 7th. If your collection date is Thursday, your spring cleanup will be on April 14th. And if your normal collection is Friday, your spring cleanup will be on Saturday, April 21st. So, if you share that with your constituents, please do so and there's a link to the website. Another public works-related item, we are looking for temporary summer workers. These are typically college kids. You have to be 18 to work for the city, but we are hiring those. So, if you know of adults, young adults in the community who are looking for temporary summer work, please send them our way and applications are on the website as well. And then last, talking with museum director Olberg today, he was telling me how successful the Peanuts exhibit has been over the past week. We're setting records with attendance over there at the history museum. So, please get over there to see it. Thank you to our friends in the media who are doing an excellent job of covering it and to Dave's team for getting the word out about it as well. Thank you.
Okay. Any other reports or recommendations? Seeing none, we'll go on to agenda item eight, ordinances. This 8.1's an ordinance. I would ask Clerk Spencer to read the ordinance.
An ordinance rezoning, in parentheses, map amendment and approving a conditional use and preliminary and final subdivision for the property commonly known as 200 East Lake Street and 193-197 East Fremont for the Elmhurst Extended Care Facility. Would you like for me to read the pen numbers?
I think so.
Okay. In print, open parentheses, pen number 03-36-309-029, close parentheses, and dash 020, close parentheses, dash, I should say slash, not close parentheses, dash 021, close parentheses.
Okay. To put this before council, I asked for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Honquist, second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Honquist.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the ordinance for Elmhurst Extended Care. I think, as we discussed at our last city council meeting and with this report, it's pretty self-explanatory. It did also add some renderings, which I think some people had made comments about last time. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, I ask for your support to move us forward. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank Elmhurst Extended Care for getting together with neighbors over the last couple of weeks to discuss landscaping and the interest in being a neighbor to the neighbors. There are a couple of points I want to bring up that have been asked of me that I don't... The neighbors on Fremont know the answers to these, but then there are other neighbors who have asked me and residents who are curious or are unsure about what this means when we move forward with this proposal, with this project. First of all, this is a map amendment and a conditional use. So, there are questions about why would the city change this to commercial and could we have commercial uses in the middle of our neighborhood? So, what is happening and what was approved two weeks ago was a report and tonight is the ordinance. It's actually to keep the area around Fremont as residential, but to change the commercial portion of it also to residential. And that might seem confusing. People would say, "Well, isn't this a commercial use?" And this kind of goes to the heart of the conditional use steps that the council has been taking. There are some uses that are allowed in residential as conditional uses. So, those include nursing care, churches and schools. So, single-family homes can be built just going through the regular permitting process downstairs, but the other uses that I just mentioned have to go through the council process of the zoning planning commission, the committee and the council. So, you know, if it is possible that there could be other types of these conditional uses throughout other residential areas, I wouldn't expect to see too many changes from commercial to residential, residential to commercial with this map amendment. But I also wanted to reiterate my opposition to this project based on the two standards that I do not see at meeting. One is that this project should not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the vicinity and will not impair property values. And the other one is that the project will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property. I appreciate the argument that it would be possible to build a single-family home across three parcels, but I don't think it's relevant because it is possible for property owners to alter their property or manage it in a way that could be injurious to the enjoyment of the other surrounding properties in the vicinity or additionally, they may do something to their property that impedes the normal development or the improvement of the surrounding properties. But in this case, because it is a conditional use, we are asked if this proposal, if this proposed project meets those standards and I do not believe that it does. Thank you.
Additional comments? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to kinda do a quick bullet point summary for the record on what I view to be my reasons and why I think this should not move forward here this evening. First, just the summary, it's gone through the zoning planning commission twice and the applicant was denied or the recommendation through, from the ZPC committee was in the negative or denied both times. Second, the first, I will call it, the first report that was before us on the agenda but then was pulled back by committee from the Development Planning and Zoning Committee also denied the applicant. Third, the comprehensive plan. This does not meet the comprehensive plan. It actually goes against what's stated in the comprehensive plan. And as I believe it was CAC attorney Ben Silver has stated in the past meetings, our own ordinances say that we must follow the comprehensive plan. So, right there, if you didn't buy the first two bullet items that I stated, right there, to me, it states that this shouldn't move forward. Conditional use, last meeting during the report stage of this application, I asked city attorney Storino for his opinion or feedback on legislative versus administrative. If, as city attorney Storino stated, we should be following what we've always followed, which is the legislative process per conditional use, and Alderman Palomsky just mentioned two of them, that she does not believe the criteria are met, I would state that three, the first three, and I will get to why I would also include number one on why those conditions aren't met. Next item being burden of proof. Resident McNichols already stated this evening and I think previous residents have also stated, the burden of proof, the residents in the surrounding area have provided testimony and I have not read or seen any testimony sworn in from the applicant, especially when it comes to property values. Precedents. I think this sets many precedents and I know some of my fellow aldermen disagree with that perception, but I believe this sets many precedents. Many precedents being that we're really not following the legislative process, even though that's, at least my belief is, even though that's what we should be doing. Because those conditions, especially two and three in our ordinances, are not met. And the ZPC commission has already stated that on multiple occasions now. But I want to go and touch on, and this is my last point, on number one in the standards, that the establishment, maintenance or operation of the conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort or general welfare. And here's why. And here's why it's a precedent. There is nowhere in the city of Elmhurst that we have a private business entity putting a stormwater detention area in the middle of a residential block. Nowhere. The only places that we did, we as a city, did it to help the overall neighborhood because of our lack of ability to maintain stormwater in our right-of-way. This proposal is to put stormwater detention on a residential block in the middle of a block in the middle of a neighborhood for the benefit of one and one only, and that is a private development. That's another precedent. If we don't believe my arguments of a precedent of legislative versus administrative, the argument of, in the ordinance making statements, the ordinance stating that we should be following the comprehensive plan, and everything else that I listed in the previous meeting, this in itself is a precedent that has never been done before. And if we move forward tonight, this will open that box for any development to do so moving forward. On top of that, the residents even tried to negotiate and request that this is, should be underground detention like we, as a city, did on Washington for our residents in the neighborhood. But instead, it's an open-air detention, which I would argue is against and would endanger the public health, safety and morals, comfort and general welfare, especially of this neighborhood. At the very least, this should have been a condition, that it should have been underground detention, not open-air detention. This is a safety issue and if this moves forward, this is a precedent that we won't be able to move from.
Any other comments? Alderman Dunn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to provide a couple of brief comments. I was not at the meeting two weeks ago where the report was put before council and discussed and then voted on. This particular development has gone through a lot of iterations. The first concept was somewhat offensive to me. I thought it was much too big of a structure and the, having a parking lot with access off of Fremont was very intrusive to those residents. So, certainly, from, in the initial concept, it just wouldn't work, in my opinion, based on the, based on the impact in the neighborhood. I think there's been several iterations on the design and if you look at the structure, I understand it to be 19,000 square feet, which is maybe the size of three or four large homes. It's set back past the adjoining houses in one of the drawings. You can see that clearly. So, the current concept, I think the applicant has done a very good job of continuing to refine it and make it more suitable for that block. Right now, this area is R2 and this is a conditional use. This particular proposal meets the elements of conditional use. So, bottom line is, at first, I thought this was really no chance of moving forward, but with the many changes to it, I will support it at this time. Thanks.
Any other comments? Clerk Spencer?
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mullenar.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Voiter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palomsky.
No.
Bram.
No.
Twelve ayes, two nays, zero absents.
Twelve ayes, two nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 8.1 is approved. Onto other business. Agenda item nine. Any other business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Honquist. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? For adjourn. Thank you.